Alright, so I guess we should get this budget meeting going here. Lisa, if you just wanna start saying where we're at, how we got to it, and then we can just go from there.
We are still at, I have 27 for insurance. Definitely I had a great conversation with him today. He's thinking that my deal might be close to a 16%. We still don't have numbers, so I left the 20% in there. With that in there, and some changes we've previously made up until this point, we are still... 223. This is the last one, okay? We are still at... 223.
220, um, 211? You're talking about over?
I think so. I think the new one is 223.
223, 287.
Yeah, and the old, I think we have the old one in front of us.
They haven't been done since 23.
223. Do you have... You have, you have the new one in front of you, we just printed that one out, 223.
223, 287, and 61 cents.
Thank you, yes. So we still have some work to do. But we have been... It has been much worse in the past. The only thing is, I do think we have to work on this, and then I think we should have another meeting in two weeks, so that we could actually try to get it finished by this month. First reading in November, we can have it done by the first meeting this summer. If you guys, if we don't cash things out.
A lot of room to watch.
Yeah.
No, 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 true.
I think the only problem is not having the exact numbers on insurance is where we're gonna have the biggest problem. And I do believe it's gonna be lower than what we had projected, but he couldn't give that, he couldn't tell Jeff for that definitive, so I left it alone for right now. So we weren't making cuts week, and then having to put it back.
He said it wouldn't be 16, wouldn't be worse.
What was that?
If it is 16%, we'd stop.
I just took something and I didn't have, I just figured it out promptly.
It's still gonna be around 175,000. If they bring it down, it's gotta drop to 4%, I'm not sure what the total is. But, uh, it's still gonna be more.
Kathy and I were working on that, figuring it all out, and then we got sidetracked.
I'm gonna get somewhere around 175,000.
We're still looking, gonna have to look for a good hundred...
75.
75, yes. I know Steve and I talked, and he's been pretty great his down, and Travis was down the other day, and trying to try to do a lot of bear going on that one too. So we've, we've been slowly looking through things and trying things.
Well, I wanna be the bad guy here. I can make a change, and, and it's, and it's going the wrong direction.
It's been going the wrong direction last week.
So...
We've down more than we were.
Yeah, so I'll, and I'll say why, oh, excuse me, why also. So, for Robin, I know we have...
We're looking at the wrong one. The one that's printed in front of us was last week's. We already changed Robin, the new one.
Oh, I don't have, I don't have.
I actually, I think, I think we got the old one printed.
Oh.
We already changed Robin.
Oh.
Nate, you have the full new one, right?
Don't forget, go make copies of this one?
If you want. Uh, sorry, sorry. Never mind it, it could be, I may not have a change.
I still have the crap one, just sorry guys, mine's down.
No, that's okay.
I'm down, sorry guys.
Thank you, Nate.
I was just looking when I saw the number, I think this is the one first...
The one from last, the original one that you sent.
And then we sent out a new one.
You sent the one out this morning? I didn't look at, I just, I just thought I had to send it.
So we did update Robyn's, that's why, yeah, so I already updated hers, and I made the changes you had done from them last week, so they are...
They're alright, we're good.
They are already in there, they just...
Like 9500.
The old one's printed out.
9500, like 12, 95,000, I think, 200. 213, 30 by 10, yeah, something like that.
9850.
The only thing with Nate bringing them down is, like, when we sent them to Jeff when he printed it?
Yeah.
Then, because we always try to send it, because he has his colors.
No.
But there will be no colors on this one.
I mean, I hate to say it, until we get the numbers, probably in two weeks...
That's gonna be a big problem, unfortunately, until we know what they're actually coming down. If they're coming down, we're still going to have to look for something.
Yeah, but at least at that point, we'll have an affirmative number, like, hey, we need to know we're 100, I'm making this something, 180 over, then we can say, alright, we gotta figure something out here to make a profit.
Yes, I do think we're looking at 175, 180, at least.
Yeah, but as you said, in previous years, it was 400,000 at this point.
Exactly, we're a very good number, where we're gonna prepare for that.
I hate to say it, starting off at, even at 223, we're better off than we were in the past, so... You hear that, Francis? We're better off than we were last year at this time.
But I do think we have to do, like, next, if we don't come out, after two weeks, make sure we get that out there, and then we have that meeting, and hopefully at that meeting, it's just budget.
Yeah.
And we cash it.
Yeah, and something to think about, I know Jim just basically brought, Jim Brimble, not Jim Easter, about this could affect one of the incomes, about the skill machines, about changing the price of that. I mean, so I think he said that right now it's $100.
And the people are gonna talk about going to 2?
Yeah, so that could...
200.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure, at least go somewhere in the...
Yeah, because they talked before about going to 30. If you can't do it, how much is gonna happen?
And that will, because that'll increase the budget.
Exactly, so I mean, it'll help a little bit, so that will change a little bit. That is, if council choose to go in that direction. And just some...
Just on that subject, Lisa, you know, we talked about that.
Yeah.
And I know the gentleman with the big gun in Pennsylvania, the tourist name is Sepulveda Care last time.
Oh, from, from Millie's, up there in Adelantorzo, he's like the rep, but knew a lot about what was going on.
Yeah, I think they are.
The owner was here that one year.
Yeah.
And he had said that most he goes are around state, I don't know, it's 300.
And I think the one thing that a lot of people, that the, that people don't like to advertise with is that the business, depending which one you go with, they get paid to be in the location x number of dollars per month.
Okay.
You're talking skill machines, though.
Yeah, that's what I'm referring to.
Yeah, we're not, the fees raised at 100, that's more than skill machines, that's everything.
Oh, I was just referring, I didn't know if Jim was talking about everything, or just referring to the skill machines.
I'm assuming he meant everything, or are you thinking just skill machines?
Skill machines, uh... That's the biggest loss that the city is having right now.
So you're looking at just changing the skill machines and not the other...
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's, it's amusement.
Quarter pushers, like, things like that, they should be doubled.
They should be doubled. But now, if you go someplace, you know, they have some bubble gum machines or something, you can't double that stuff.
Well, we, we don't even charge, I think they're only on 50 or something right now.
No, I think it's...
Smaller ones?
I'm not, I, I think they're all 100 across the board, but like, you know, like a Coke machine, like... Doubling isn't gonna do any good, but the skill machines, and that may be a question for Joel, if we can specify...
We have to figure out, can we specify, you're still in your 100s, please, but it's 200 for your skill machine.
I think it is in the ordinance, it, you know, it says what falls under that category, so we could probably, I'll call it a subcategory, I don't know the proper term, it's like, this is still 100, as you said, but the skill machines are gonna be double, not necessarily double, but they are gonna be 200. So, once again, people are gonna be not happy, but, once again, I think they failed to tell you...
It's the owners of the machines that have to pay.
Last we checked, it was 100 and... I mean, last we checked, I think last year it was 128, I would believe.
And that's just skill machines?
That's just skill machines.
So that doesn't include all the new places that got popped up?
Yes, or the ones that didn't get accounted for even then, because, you know, hey, there may be one in here today, but there could, next week there could be five, because people see what they do, so...
And $200 increase, it's $16.07 a month per machine.
Yeah, I think they're making more than 16.
So we're gonna go from 22,000 to 44,000, I said, if you, if you up the fine from five bucks, because the fine only five bucks. If you don't pay it, I said, I'd rather you catch me, it's five bucks. If you don't catch me, I don't pay nothing. If you catch me, I'm gonna pay 105. If we make an actual fine, I mean, an actual fine of maybe 50 bucks, if you don't pay it by January, like, March 1st, that's an actual...
Like, wait, some say, fine should be equivalent to whatever you want.
I'm thinking something.
But Jim, like you said, the owner of machines are paying that tariff.
Correct, out of their percentage.
But I mean, I...
So it's not gonna hurt, if anybody says, oh, now I'm gonna have to close my place because of the double tax on the machine, they're full of mud, they're full of mud, because they are gonna get the same amount of percentage from the owner.
I was charged with this...
And they're not paying.
Two boxes, pool tables, and skill machines.
Yeah, I said, we're, and we're just talking about the skill machines doubling, not anything else.
Okay.
Yeah. So...
Joe, you said our fines only five, I thought they were worth more.
It's 5%.
It's, it's 5%, it's five bucks.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if you don't pay, if you don't pay, it's five bucks. Yeah, and it...
Oh, I see, 5%, that'll break.
So I'm gonna catch me. I think it's like one of those things, it's kind of like with the housing permits. I don't know what that number is off the top of my head, but like... You pay it, you pay it, you know, between March, between January, March, it's this price, but, you know, like, the fine is not worth it. Like, if I don't pay my rental permit...
It's an extra 25, then it's an extra 25.
Yeah, so big deal.
I would say an extra 10, then 25.
Yeah, and it's, it goes back to one of those things that Jeff said, okay, catch me, in three years, when it's time for inspection, alright, I'll pay now, because I need it, but hey, for the other two years, I'm not paying. So I think it's one of those things, we have to look at what our fines are, and actually make them hurt a little bit, not just say, okay, five bucks, big deal, catch me.
When was the last time we did look at that one? Does anybody...
19, like 1951?
I mean, I know we've been looking at the fees themselves, but we haven't looked at the fine part of it, correct?
I mean, I, I mean, that's some...
I don't remember ever talking about that one.
Not only have you ever talked about the fine itself either. And like, it's one of those things, you can't predict it in the schedule itself, but at the same time, at the end of the day, it's gonna help, at the end of the day.
Yeah, well, five dollars, that's, that's nothing.
Joel, is he throwing something?
And, and quite honestly, it's gonna be the person who owns the machine that's gonna pay. I thought that this Saturday was the person who owns the machine.
Yeah, but once again, they're not gonna hurt.
That's not, I mean, because you have some businesses, because I was on this when this all started. You have some businesses in the city that spoke with me, and it depends on how that person, whether it's newly or whatever, whether it's pointy or whatever, is in their contract, so that is not true. So there are businesses that, that do have to pay the fee because it's in their contract with whoever they were coming from.
How they negotiate it.
Correct, so that's...
If they did, that's kinda stupid on their part.
Well, I, I, it's not here nor there, I'm just explaining to you that this is another business, but, you have a concern...
There is no harm between there anybody's doing that, because I'm pretty sure anybody that's doing this, I know we're one of them. Or can, you know, they, they pay for it.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't get a fee for having our machine, you know, it's all based on the percentage of what's taking it down.
Well, I have machines as well, and Dietrich's own line, okay? They pay the fee. I'm not paying any, so it's not hurting me one way or another.
That's the way we are too.
But it is...
I think most, I think pretty much most people are like that. I mean, if somebody's, oh, they don't pay the fee.
We have a lot of times, yeah, cussing our ordinance. Yeah, I think they just don't know what our ordinance says, but in ordinance it says the owner of the machine, not the business, but once again, either here nor there.
Well, the other thing with that ordinance is that it has the police chief is the one that's supposed to, people like those. Well, and I'm saying, that was brought up before, I'm advocating that the police chief is not the person that needs to be doing that. And it was discussed by Councilman Barnhart that they were going to play a flatter or something on the shop of machines, and what is, what is the expectation, because I know some new ones have popped up, have they come in and, and paid their fee?
And so this is a joke, probably not, to be honest, it's one of those things, catch me, and then I'll pay it.
Yeah, we've got, we've got, it's a business that just put in...
But I, I, I think, from what, what I was, you could, uh, I'm, I'm on it. If you have sectors for your code officers, like, the sector is being by this code officer, this sector is this ward, this ward, this ward, they then can go in and check, get those updated, get those updated, and then they be responsible for that.
Well, yes. List.
So, other than changing the skill machines collection, obviously we can't do much more with the budget here tonight. Oh, Nate, I'm sorry, when you were gone, Jim brought up about doubling the fee for the skill machines from 100 to 200 dollars, uh, so that affected our budget in a good way a little bit, and then also looking at the penalties for not paying it, not just for that one, but maybe reviewing other ordinances, like the rental permits, if you don't pay it on time, instead of being like a 5%, which is only 5 dollars, okay, making it hurt a little bit more, saying, alright, it's gonna be 50. So, we're gonna have Joel write something up to see how we can change it legally, so, that's what, as I seen that question. And pretty much said that, other than what we talked about here, not you can't do much more, because we get the insurance numbers in, hopefully in two weeks, to come back and just bring it together.
To answer your question about 20% and 17% on, on evidence, so I looked at, I just took the police one, which was on purpose, to do, so right now is at, uh, 20%, it's 246, 897. If it went to 17%, it'd be 240, 725, so it's roughly $6,000 difference on, on that, so if you, you know, it's not, it's not gonna be significant.
Francis, yeah.
How much are you sure?
Right now, right now, we're 223, but that's with higher expected insurance numbers, that we don't have the exact number for, and in two weeks, we hope to have the numbers, to have a set number that we're over, that way we know the ones and the needs.
Didn't he say, Jeff, he thought we could have a better number by next week?
Yes, he said, and the numbers, guys, reasons the numbers are so high, he said, because there's more staff this year than last year, right? That's why the number...
The difference from last year to this year, because the numbers...
There's five extra staff members, that's why it looks so high, so it's really, might not be the 16% that we're looking at.
I think he's, I don't think he was willing to come out and tell us if it's gonna be less than that, but we could maybe add that.
Well, it's one of those things, hey, shoot high, then, hey, hey!
Be happy for low.
Exactly, hey, it's not really gonna be that.
I'd rather be able to say we could take something, and then have to add something back in if we get to a good number.
Okay.
What do we have on this, uh?
What's in the city, I don't know if it's cops, you, me, I mean, it's not me, code, code has a few extra, code has extra.
Well, it might have been with Penny leaving, and Rachel coming on, uh, with the, we'll go in...
Rachel, and then Becky, and Rachel and Becky were two, right?
No, Becky's been here.
Becky's had her, the insurance, so Rachel's natural. But he said one was from 19 to 20.
But maybe like Penny wasn't on, I'm saying, I don't know who was on.
I think it was 19, and then this last, we had 24.
Yeah, so we want five staff members, that's why the numbers look so exceedingly high.
No, I mean, was she on, that's what I'm, I don't know, I don't know, I said, I don't know who was on, but she's off, on, off, on, she changed her.
And Gary's off, so we haven't had any.
So maybe the double check.
They do look bigger though, because we calculated in, we were placing Gary.
Yeah, so next year.
We didn't take that out, we left those numbers in, because that's your replacement area. So we have those two behind us.
What about, like, this...
Wait, is it that new one?
Yeah, this is a new one. What about in 342211, I know I brought this up before, about Hurricane, Sunoco, and Cruel?
Yeah, ink from page two.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just looking at, like, how long is this contract for then? Because you have Cruel linked, it gets two floors.
We just renegotiated for, like, wasn't that last year?
There's this one, I brought, I brought it to you.
What I'm looking at is, like, that's $103,000 versus Sunoco and Hurricane are only paying 32 and 20,000.
That was brought up before, and it's a long-term use of that.
We were, we were bad negotiators then.
We gave it away. It's easy to sit here and say, now, by saying, so we were renting land, we were renting floor space.
But can we, like, how long is those leases for?
Well, we just, Cruel link's probably five years old.
No, we just redid Cruel.
No, I don't think it's, I think it's talking about the Burger King's, you know, because they're so low, and, you know, looking in the future.
We just did last year, and there's, there's an inflation factor going into it.
Right, right.
Do you think it's supposed to be 300, or is that what I'm going into?
They, yeah.
It's not going up this year.
I mean, it should though.
Does it mean it's exactly...
Me, which one?
Right there for Burger King or Cruel?
We probably, we have stuck with last year's, because we haven't seen where it has changed that, and that lease.
Uh, it should, no, no.
But I don't think for, it was changing.
I'm, I'm pretty sure I saw that contract, it goes up 2% every year.
2%, 2 and 1/2.
I'll double check that contract, we don't have that contract, we're just basing it on what we've done past years. So you say, you think Hurricane goes up 2%?
Yeah, if you look at the past, what we actually brought in from 2022, you see it, you see it goes up. Going from 33.1 to 33.8 to 34.5. Jimmy, how long, how long is that, how long is that thing?
20 years, probably, since enacted.
Kathy might have just carried over the numbers, Josh, honestly, without the increase.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, a little, I mean, it's not gonna be major numbers, but...
But everyone has...
Yeah, everybody's on council, and...
So it should be coming up soon, soon.
Long these days. So, the actual, what puts that number on? So, right now, for, for...
Actually, the actual is probably here, it's probably up for...
Me, yeah, if you look at Cruel link...
Oh, you mean the others off?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it should be actually, I mean, I'm ramming between those three.
Yeah, that, I said, the Cruel link one hasn't been up in two years, three. Yeah, like leases off, that ain't...
He said, he said that they were...
Your 20-year leases, and Dale Henry was on, what, 2012, I think? That means you still owe her seven years, probably. Oh, I said Jeff has it, I'll find you, see what they are.
Burger King, Burger King, Sunoco.
We already know where Cruel link's at, we're, tried to get a number on where, what their actual number is. Cru, no, no, like the Cruel link number, because that's like 103.
Well, I didn't tell you, it's 9,056 dollars per month on the first day of the month. So it's 1,000, 180,000, six seventy, and then 3% takes apart, 11 dollars off.
It's more than 11.
And they're eight.
This year was 111.
That drives progress.
So we could probably do Hurricane, that's probably more better than that.
That's probably another 3,000. Sunoco, probably another 1,000, rough numbers.
What about that 911 tax we talked about?
See, and that's something I would like to talk about too.
Which one?
Some of these contracts, we should probably have a copy of in the treasurer's office for this purpose. They're not there for us, like, when we do, like, you know, we talk about this, like, with Rachel, when she's doing payroll, she literally will get out the police contracts and make sure they match. If we don't have that in front of us, then we're going on a budget with what we thought. So we should probably be able to have a copy of those budgets to refer back to, not a copy of budgets, a copy of the contracts to refer back to for those increases every month.
Do you have Cruel link, but we should be...
I don't think I have any of it.
Hi, I'll send one.
But I had made myself a notation about Cruel link, because I do remember us, we changed that contract last year. And I know we built him, each year it's gonna go up. But I think we did 3% for Cruel.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah.
And I know we talked briefly about the 911 tax, I mean, that's more of a Joel question, when he comes, well, obviously...
About 35 for Hurricane?
35, 222 would be what you should expect this year.
So then maybe 2% on that.
Yes, it was like 2%. But it's not...
So, so we should get about 35, so 2% on that is not in that month, so maybe 36.
I mean, did we want Joel to look into that 911 tax that we kind of spoke about briefly, like, I think a couple meetings ago? So that way you see what we can do legally and not legally, and obviously, we probably never get that done this year, but for next year, at least we have a better purpose and understanding of it. Like I said, at least some Joel would have to look into legally. So, okay.
So we're looking at 35, 926, 927 for that one.
Which would increase the... 35, 926.
So then, if I'll double check on Cruel link, and then, are you thinking Sunoco's the same?
Sunoco looks like... 2, I'd probably say 2% if I had to guess, because I imagine they got negotiated at the same time, it's probably 2%.
Hurricane was 3% this year.
Whoppers in there for us.
What happened was, the parking lot, which is on the summer motor side, the fifth street side, we paid, but we didn't have the money, so Hurricane paid, he paid that, and did the calculations out, and the 1% in 20 years was X, and the parking lot paving was more than that X, and they said they put it in their note, which they wanted to pay. So they paid for the parking lot paving, and put the entrance, well, Fifth Street coming into the parking lot, and took 1% off, because they did pay for the parking lot.
The, the Sunoco isn't gonna be too drastic, it's probably like 20,900, it's about 889. I mean, but it's still $900.
True doubt. Now, the main progress.
Well, Cruel, Cruel will be wrong too.
That'll go up 3%.
My, my, the schedule will be approved last year. 111, this year, 11,000.
So that will probably, I'd like to try to start...
No, no, no.
I would like to try to get copies of some of the contracts that we do have that are gonna fluctuate, and have them in the treasurer's office for budgeting, that way we can pull them out and make sure we're getting exact numbers, and not just an estimate.
Yeah. 111, 111,000, 93216. 932.16. I hope so.
Pretty good number.
That should be 2,000, 16.27.
They're rounding everything up. We're down, we're doing even numbers.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Anything else on the budget that we can do at this point in time, anyone? I mean, we made, made a little bit of progress here tonight, which is a good thing. Every little bit helps. Yeah, that's one less thing, well, that's a little bit less we could do next time.
Yeah, so it's 100 and something thousand.
That's right.
I'm hoping that even the insurance number might be lower than...
Yeah.
...triumph or don't forget.
Well, even 3% lowers a little bit, you know.
And it could be more than that, so we're trying, but he, he used a lot of, um, explanation as to trying to say or not say, and get us to anywhere, just to be able to use numbers, so that's why we decided to stay high.
Yeah. Alright, anybody else on the budget stuff?
Um, I know we talked about it previously, like revisit, can we possibly set up Bridge Department path? In other words, let's say Jim wants to buy a truck this year. Works out, he doesn't buy the truck, but he budgeted, you know, he budgeted money towards that. Leave that interest-bearing account, he would roll over to the next year. Then he goes and buys a truck, and whatever's left, I mean, that's his, that's his fund.
To do what he wants.
Towards bigger ticket items, stuff, pocketing, getting huge numbers, and he does that different times.
We do have a Campbell outlay, and in that Campbell outlay... And in that Campbell outlay is like, we never mind the car. Like there is like.
But you're.
I don't wanna say a sub, he wants to add it and we kind of have it in a way.
Yeah, I understand you have Apple, that's a fun.
With our sub rides that go to you, go to you.
But I know, but I know what Steve's saying, like, for example. He's, he's figuring three years down the road, he's only a truck, so I'm gonna budget ten grand this year.
Every year.
And then that way it's setting aside, yeah.
And, and that's all my, I mean.
I mean, I think, I think it's a smart thing to do because it goes back to strategically planning long term.
And that way you know, hey, this, this piece of equipment, it's due good.
You can plan.
Like if you go in I works and if you're tracking your stuff properly, when you're inputting all your data, when you win and you service the vehicle or whatever. It will come up and tell you a number. And it'll say, the number will say, this, this piece of equipment's at the optimal time to replace. So you start budgeting towards that.
Mm-hmm.
And you save there's that.
Hundred percent.
It's just responsible management of a budget in each department.
Well, I think we've tried to do that many years prior and just unfortunately.
I mean, I, I guess Lisa, the question is for you and me, like, can you guys, I'll, I'll call paperwork, do the paperwork on your end. If council proves us like, alright, Steve wants the budget, I'm making this up here for a mower. Five years down the road, he puts two thousand away each side, each year. Can you guys manage that? Alright, so I mean, I guess there's our answer. We just have to make, I guess, make an official vote.
We're just gonna have to figure out how you guys want it.
Yeah.
To be done, how we're gonna do it and what.
Yeah, just put it on paper on how we. I, I'll call it an agreement, I guess. I'll call it for lack of terms, agreement like that we say during budget season, hey, I'm letting you know, I'm using this for this three years from now. That way you guys can have a note in your system.
There needs to be something in there that not really like a lockbox, as they call like the social security that I was like.
Yeah.
But the lockbox sort of thing that this is this department's funds, but guess what? If the real emergency comes up.
If the roof blows off this building, sorry, everything else.
It all flows. So you go, I, I get that. But there needs to be some way that, that some parameters put in place that, hey, unless it reaches this level, that reaches a, a council vote that we're gonna strip everybody's capital asset.
Yeah.
We feel it's that, that, that higher of a situation. Then we'll go ahead and do that. And then the other thing is. And I know this is, this is walking on toes on, on municipal financing, but is there any way that we can take any of our residuals out of our budget from a yearly basis and directly over towards capital asset management at the end of the year? So say you have a really good year this year, let's say for us, we don't get a lot of snow, that if we don't get a lot of rain, so the grass isn't growing. Suddenly our labor numbers come in a little bit better, our gas numbers come in a little bit better, this is a net number. And we have a residual left in some of those budget items. Can we then redirect that money into the capital asset management fund? Instead of leaving it roll back in general, can we put it into that capital asset fund and do an interest-bearing account towards our goal of we do this for our building, we do this for a piece of equipment or whatever we're doing?
The answer is yes. Okay, but you have to do it as a budget and then you can do the, uh, resolution, a budget resolution.
Okay, that's, that's, I would.
I mean, I think, as you said, Steve, it's smart financial planning, strategically planning for three, five, ten years down the road.
I mean, I don't, what I don't wanna do is I don't wanna sit in a situation where we have residuals in our budget and then suddenly that shortfalls for the next year. I mean, there's gotta be a cap somewhere in there.
Yeah.
Such a percentage, you can only not be could possibly roll that.
Pull, yeah, something, yeah. Okay, I think it's a great idea. Anybody else opposed or at least wanting to look more information? That makes a great idea, strategically planned.
Something to talk about.
Yeah, it's a matter of doing, it's a matter of doing it.
We've discussed it over, you know, several times.
Any other questions on the budget for tonight?
And the capital reserve, it just be capital reserve then on, you, you can.
In the system itself.
Sub accounts.
Yeah.
That you put in, uh, one year.
Just kind of what we have now, but we can define what we want.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
You're, you're keep for it.
Yes. I didn't know if that was something we wanted to wait till we got the numbers in to revisit it. Cause I guess we could bring it up, we could talk about it here, it's up to you guys. Alright, let's talk about it. Oh, cause I didn't know if we wanted to get the actual numbers, so I didn't know if it's.
I don't know, it's not gonna make a difference if you wanna do that.
I mean, it kind of, does, does not, but so does anybody want to, I mean, right now we get, each employee gets thirty-six hundred dollars a year for not taking insurance. Is that a reach out?
Sure.
So, I mean, like.
The police department gets less, right?
No.
Three thousand.
Three thousand.
Doesn't say, I thought there was a little difference.
So.
Is that my trap?
It's probably two thousand or three thousand.
So we change.
Two or three.
But they don't take.
Two or three thousand is not taking insurance.
They have to take insurance, they get like, I think it's two hundred dollars.
Okay, they get, they get a lesser amount, they're not, not in the.
So this is, like I said, this is an option before, like offering a higher, a call buyout for lack of terms, of not taking the insurance, so therefore it saves us on the, it saves us on the law and the paying of the higher costs compared to their buyout. I don't know if that is something we want to look to increase to see that would increase the amount of people that may not take the insurance or not. But also you look on the other side of, okay, if you do increase, they get, obviously increase all those people who are not taking. So it's gonna be a numbers game to see where you're at. Also.
Plus you're also gonna have to be prepared. You're gonna have to put money aside for that emergency person that you have to put on the following year or, you know.
Yeah.
That kind of thing. So you'll have to have a little extra budgeting.
Yeah, so I didn't know if anybody for, against, keep it the same. I didn't know, I didn't know what people's thoughts were on it.
I'm in favor of raising it.
What do you think it should be raised to? Well, I mean, we, we kind of have to know what you wanna raise it to so we can see the run.
Over three hundred now, right?
Three hundred for uniform, non-uniform or two hundred.
They kind of serve six for.
Non-uniform.
Not uniform, twenty-four.
Six hundred a year.
Per uniform.
The question is, do, do we ever implement where you have, if your spouse has insurance available at their workplace that you have to tell them?
So, so we did, but the number, the calculation was all messed up. Like this before Lisa, you were here, uh, Nate or Jim, so this is back when Chris Reese was here. So we tried to implement that, but we put some funny formula into it. If it ran the cost greater, I forget the exact number, greater than, I'm making up a number here, a thousand dollars of what they would lose, then they don't have to convert over. And basically it didn't work out for anybody. It, it's like the math was, the formula was so messed up, it's like, it didn't work out. It wasn't beneficial for anyone to do it. But.
I mean, I know guys here, I mean, I.
Yeah, it's, and I was.
I just absolutely said, listen, if your spouse has the eligibility to get insurance, they have to get it there. You can't be insured if you're guys here anymore. I'm just saying that that's what we just instituted at the city.
Yeah.
We looked into that and seen what kind of effect that would have.
Yeah.
Actually, I think the state of Pennsylvania is down there too.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, cause right now maybe we're paying insurance.
Yeah.
For a whole family and the spouse is working at a place that is getting the bonus because they're, you know, they're, they're not, and, and we're paying for, for a whole family that you need to. They don't know, just have to look into it. It's a budget saving item.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
So Jim, Nate, other Jim, do you have an idea what, if you, if you would wanna up it, if that's not an option, for example, what do you feel something?
Looking at the possibility, your spouse has a job that.
Offers it.
Impolites, number one, put that.
Here's something, if we're gonna do that, we better figure that out. We won't be able to do it this year anymore. We're like, what, enrollment's like now, isn't it? Yeah, so.
Most, most of the time it's in October.
Yeah, so.
I don't wanna say that for sure, but most of the time.
So we won't be able to implement that until next year if we should go, choose to go that option. But I didn't know, like I said, you, they said they're in favor of upping it, what you think it should be up to. That way we can at least run calculations of numbers, the number of people on it currently that we may wanna go off.
And it's gonna be a number you guys wanna do. I think, I have, I talked to Travis, I had those numbers, what I think will be, I know what we have, who has. It's just gonna, we are gonna have to make adjustments to who does accept it and we're gonna have to make adjustments to who's not.
Yeah.
How does it five hundred do in a month?
Are you going five hundred, five hundred for everybody or just five hundred for non-uniform? Because like I said, it's three hundred for non-uniform, two hundred for uniform. I don't know if you wanna make it like it or.
Would that affect your, your contract?
I don't think that was.
It would just be amended, saying we're both agreeing on this amendment.
Like, like Milton P D, like, I was with women around, it's different department. Milton P D, I think there is this twelve hundred dollars a month, that's what they give around. Gotta opt out.
I love you all, but it's not useful.
Right, well, that's, that's what I'm saying, like, it's not, they just, they just, they, they don't care. They, our guards don't care.
You give, you give me thirty-six hundred.
If you do the five hundred and six thousand.
So Lisa, why don't you run the cost in six thousand and see where it puts us.
Across the board.
Across the board and then.
For seventy-five hundred.
What was that?
And then running for seventy-five hundred.
Yeah, but then we also, remember, we also have to see all the current people who aren't on it right now. Obviously, they're all gonna get an increase. So we have to see what the numbers are. Yeah, and then also we're at, we obviously have to put it out there and say, alright, if you were offered, I'm just making this number up, the six thousand, would you jump off or stay on?
We would have to know, like I, like I said, I, Travis and I talk, I know who would stay.
Yeah.
Who would go, how would we handle that?
Yeah.
I would have to, we would have to, each department would have to get back to me and say, this is what's gonna happen, here's who's staying, here's who's gonna go.
Yeah.
We have some number that we're gonna have to figure out for a couple of years.
Yeah.
So it really is gonna come down to maybe each department in the next day or two, letting you know, asking a question.
It costs me, if you go with five thousand years, it's gonna cost me around three thousand dollars. I have two. We're currently thirty-six.
You only.
Three hundred and five thousand, I have two.
But do you think that anybody else is gonna jump on that? That's what I mean. You're gonna have to ask everybody if they change their minds. Cause that's what we're, that we're trying to figure out.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's, that's, I think we'll need.
Yeah, so if you could.
Especially if you're.
Right, we're not. So it, and it might, it might turn out in the end, it is not beneficial.
Right, yeah, it's.
It can give me a.
I think first is to survey and see who's willing to.
Do it.
Who wants to do it.
Yeah, and then I know like Milton is, like they pay the twelve hundred dollars, but they save eighteen thousand.
Right. If it's a family.
Right, I'm just, what I'm saying.
If it's individual, you don't save that much.
Right, what I'm saying, like if you had ten people at eighteen, that's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
That's true, if everybody's on the family, that's.
Right, right.
Just Alex, here's a question. Twenty-one years old work for the city, somewhere, I don't know what's worse, I'm gonna take the money.
You're not, you're gonna, you're, anybody under twenty-six we're not worried about right now.
Okay, twenty-seven. But that's for my.
Most of the time.
It's complicated things anyhow. Is there a law in the books that I, as an individual, I just take the money, I have no healthcare?
I, I think it's like you, you're taking that, or it's like anything.
Yes, but I.
Not you, you.
I know, years ago, I know somebody did that. And he said, hey, like I said, it's my problem, but he took the money, put it aside, and he bought my new car.
And, uh. Was that you when you were twenty-six?
No.
We have a few personal, we can cover it in the audience. At least offering.
Well, yes, we, we're, yes, we're gonna have to sign off.
He had to say you're not taking it for.
You don't legally have insurance. None of our contractors, very few of our contractors. Very few of our contractors pay fringe benefits out of cash. Either, either guys go get, do whatever insurance they wanna get, and they wanna get it. If they don't wanna get it, they don't need to get it. So you could al- you could always move to a fringe benefits. And just say, here's what the fringe benefits cost for your, for your insurance. And, you know, you can take relief.
That's a risky thing to do on their part, but I, I don't think there's any reason why they couldn't. Now, it'd be kinda crazy and then, you know, when they miss a lot of time, definitely do it. Get somebody else.
Let's look into this option first.
Um, everybody can try to get me a general idea who has, who may take, who may not, just let me know. And I will work on some numbers for us.
Well, we've gotta take a little bit outside the box, Josh, cause we can't sustain fourteen percent, fifteen percent, twenty percent.
No, 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 no.
A year, a year.
Just it's a possibility.
Yeah, at some point, you know, we have to a little take a little outside the box, that's what I'm saying.
True that.
Maybe if, maybe if.
I'll work on that, I'll work on that by next week. I'll get some numbers and I'll put them out there for everybody.
That works. Anyone else on the budget? Anyone else? Alright, can we move on to the next thing for the work session? I mean, in the work session, the budget. So, uh, the, the, the staff clock in slash digital scheduling. I don't, like I said, I know council was up there with the P D showing how our scheduling makes place, how, you know, you can see when everyone's working, when everyone's off, if they are off, if they're off of training. So I didn't know if everybody across the board in each department, make it, it's easier for everybody to understand, you know, especially with the finance department, like, hey, these, these people should be working this week, this, well, they should be getting paid, or the time slips matching up for everyone's.
I would love for us to be able to either work on our payroll system, but, cause we use two different.
Yeah.
Merge them and find a way to make them work together.
Well, like I said, but we're, so like how we do ours, like.
I raised one, I went up with Travis the other day.
Yeah, so like it could be across the board that way, if everybody chooses to go that way. And it's also like, it's a checks and balances, it's holding everybody accountable. And for example, if, I'm just making this up, if there is overtime, we'll say a street department, alright, supervisor has to sign off on it. Like it's not just saying, oh, I'm just getting overtime because I decided to work an extra half hour, I'm just making this up.
Well, that would cost overtime.
Yeah, and I'm just, I'm just, I'm just just as an example. So, and like I said, it's a checks and balances for everybody, especially if it comes in the schedule, like, hey, they, they get paid for eight and a half, like eight hours a day. Why is it coming in at eight and a half? What, you know, so it's a checks and balances. I didn't know what everyone's thought process was on that, if they're for it, against it, or.
Wait, do we really have a lot, do we really have a lot of departments? I mean, Travis's is different.
Yeah.
Um, Steve's is probably one of the only ones that really does it in overtime though, correct?
I mean, like I said, I know Jim.
I'm just, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to ask that.
Yeah, I know Jim will time because of the, the prop, the scheduling of the ring, it's, it's, it's just the nature of the beast up there.
I, I like.
And sometimes code would, depending if, you know, something happens, catastrophic outside of normal process of the day, like fires or an emergency or whatever, they may have to.
Do you guys, what do you use? What do you use?
Plan, power times.
And like I s- I mean, so is anybody against it, for it? Maybe we should go that route for checks and balances, make it easier on the finance department, you know, get with the times and getting away from pen and paper or turning in time slips, you know, getting with the times.
Yeah, I'd be interested in seeing what they have up there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's, I don't, I don't know what their system is, but I'd be interested to see if it has any applicable uses at our place.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if we have some way that we can automate it and make it, take it away from the, 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 the current cap, sure, we can update and upgrade.
Four years, now it's time to do it.
Yeah, so, and, and here's the, and here's the best part, it's free because we can piggyback off the police department.
There you go.
So.
I'm sure we have to make some adjustments though. I'm sure there will have to be a small cost somewhere, I imagine.
Nope, no, there, there are costs.
Yeah, they already called us, they already have it.
The only, the only cost there would be is if they taught us how to do it, if they taught us how to do it, but Renee and Travis could teach us, it would cost us zero money for the city.
And Rachel, cause like I said, Rachel line went down, I missed out with Travis the other day, and I do think she would, she would be able to, I, I think there would be, there'd be a smoother transition at payroll.
Yeah, and like I said, this picture, this will make everyone's life easier and just more accountable.
There'd be no cost.
Alright.
Well, no cost is always good because we'll have to figure out that transition and are they compatible with everything else we have.
Yeah.
Because you have to figure out everything else we use through there too, because of all of the, your NMOs and.
However they report to you, that's how we report, the code would, I would, Steve would, everybody report to you. And when you sit at your computer, that's when you start working. When you sit down, that's when you start working.
Yeah, and then it can log, like I said, if you're, I'm just new to Steve's guys, big seven to three third. So like, that's what we're getting paid for, unless, you know, Steve puts a note in there, I'm just making this up, Steve, once again. You know, we were plowing snow till five o'clock, everybody that day gets the hour and a half of comp time or overtime, whatever it may be. And that's all noted in your system, so, and then, you know, for vacation time, whatever, it's all tracked in there rather than having it, you know, written up in a notebook, like oh, you know, nineteen-eight ways.
We're on square issues, right?
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, that's what you're on, Steve.
And that plus the scheduling, everybody will know where everybody's at except for the customer at least.
Yeah, alright, any other questions on the, the clock in system? Alright, so the next one, uh, police accreditation. Uh, like I said, nothing against leases, Jim or Nate, you guys kind of weren't here for this, but, so back when Kurt and Brad were here, they kind of started accreditation. Didn't really know the, why they were doing it until Travis kind of looked into it again. So like I said, when they built the P D, it was built for accreditation, the cars were built for accreditation, so everything's built for accreditation. So when they went off to grant training school, when the police department is accredited, they get bumped to the top of the list for any grant they apply for. Across any other police municipality. So this could help us getting more grants from the P D because, um, they're, they have this.
Accreditation?
Yeah, accreditation. And the closest ones are, is what Mahoney.
Mahoney Township is the only one in this area, the closest one to is this Hertford.
Yeah, and the original is Mahoney Township is because Terry Ketchum used to work with us, now works there, he got him a credit. So there is a cost to it, it's twenty seven, twenty seven thousand.
Four seven thousand, that's just Lexipool, it basically, Lexipool will work with us over the next year to get to implement, uh, implement uh, new policy regulations to meet accreditation standards, which is the same as the state police. So basically, they, and then they actually come in every six months, basically check everything, go through your evidence, they, they, they do a whole bunch of things.
So it's like a, it's basically an internal audit through them to do for us.
Right, and, but then what Lexipool basically does for you is gets you, that twenty seven thousand dollars, they walk with you with the accredited manager, accredited manager uh, in our department, and then that accreditation manager will basically be in charge of making sure policies, everything basically is reviewed monthly. Anytime something changes in case law and through Lexipool, Lexipool will update the uh, credit, or basically update the policy and then push the policy out, all done approved it, and then it goes into the same wording and everything as what the policy is for social police.
Is it a, is it a one-time cost or a year's cost?
It's a one-time cost, twenty seven thousand.
How long does the accreditation last?
Accreditation lasts basically for, as long as you get to a standard and then you, then basically the manager then basically takes over once Lexipool pulls back, and then the manager basically will stay with the system. And then there's certain things you have to meet with that, like use of force and, and, you know, compliance of the courts and things like that.
Yeah, so the twenty seven buying, buying in for life.
Twenty seven thousand is basically Lexipool walking with us hand in hand and going with us through this process, it's gonna take about a year. They said if we, if we would implement it now, they would start the accreditation now and not charge till January.
And it's kind of one of those things, we wanted to bring it up now because since it isn't our, we can afford it out of our budget now, rather than putting it in next year's budget, it's like, oh, now we gotta find additional twenty seven thousand. If we vote to do it now, it's already in our budget for this year to get it done, so that way we, we don't have to pay it till twenty, excuse me, to January first, we already have it in this year's budget to pay right away and then.
Use a backup for that with Travis.
What's that?
Use a backup one.
Yeah.
Use a backup, what I, what I wanna do is it's gonna be also coming up down to number number six.
Yeah, so then going down, oh yeah, so like selling to the fusion, other things that are gonna be sold would help pay for this, the accreditation process.
Do you feel, is there anything that we don't have and we would have to purchase in the accreditation?
No, so we, basically with what we did with the strategic planning with the tasers, the body cams, the in-car cams, that tenure that we just did recently did a half a million, that is what set us up to make me feel that I feel comfortable going with this accreditation because not much we have to purchase. We also went away from the shotguns, went to left lethal, and that also helps set us up for. So everything that I've been doing over the past year or year and a half, we, it's, it's leading to accreditation, I just feel it's, now's our time to pull, pull trigger.
Not that much. Alright.
Travis, who else in the area is credited?
Mahoney Township's the only one that's credited, whole township lost their accreditation, um, the chief that, that chief out there had not. It's basically the chief, the manager, the accredited manager, who I signed in the department, um, which grew up in a Perry, I guess, or, um, who's been here, he's now a corporal, but he'll be here for at least fifteen years that I feel comfortable him being in that position to help you in this world. Instead of having somebody like a soft slack or something, being a manager, being trained in it, and then next thing you know, one of us pops smoke, you know, we die, it's, it's, you have somebody that's set up that's going to be here for a while.
Any other questions on accreditation, anyone? Alright, uh, moving on to grant writer signature of the resolution, obviously Jess sent an email to everyone who's signed off on someone who wanted to be their uh, grant signee that has a vote on. So we have Robin, we have Amy, we have, oh, Randy, oh, Randy, excuse me, Randy, uh, Renee, Jeff and Steve. Does anybody else wanna names, wanna add their grant writer signee on any paperwork for their departments? No, I mean, that's fine, it says, I mean, and someone else can do it for you, it says, like, if, you know, obviously Steve, like Steve is looking for, he needs someone else to do it for me, he can do all the paperwork and so, so. Alright, just wanted to double check to make sure we got everyone covered, alright, moving on to the next one here, number five, the language interpreter through Axon, she wants to talk about that one.
So the language interpreter through Axon would be basically us bridging our gap with um, language barriers. Um, it's, it's become, we, it's become more and more of an issue, um, in passes, incidents, we've had to wait five hours to be able to interview somebody. With uh, the Axon project that council approved, um, that strategic planning for that ten years included the body cams, they have different buttons that you can basically um, buy into and this would be, it'd be a forty thousand dollar project, spaced out over ten years, four thousand dollars a year. And what would happen is if somebody's speaking Spanish to us, we can push the button, it then interprets it in English for, for the officer on scene, also transcribes it. Um, so same thing, we can speak into it, it then puts it back out to them in Spanish. My thing was is, um, like I said, again, strategically planning could be, it's forty thousand dollars, I asked them to break it down for us, they can break it down with our tenure, with our uh, hammers and everything else that we have, and only charge us four thousand dollars a year on that first, so it helps us with our budget. Um, the only thing I did ask at the meeting with them tomorrow is I would like to do a thirty day trial with it, um, just to see what it is like, um, and how, how it actually operates. So, um, in, in speaking with them, they're willing to uh, sit down with us, also give us other police departments that are using it, there's nobody in this area that's using it, so.
Do you know, uh, was it looking to like, if there's someone that's taking language, translating it out and then transcribing it, is, are those records at court admissible?
Well, would it be, I have to, since it's so brand new to this area, I'd have to talk with O'Donnell about it, but even, even that, I, I understand what you're saying, that's, that's great, it would be an awesome thing to have, but even if you have an officer on scene, when people are talking in, in Spanish and they can't understand it, even if somebody would say, hey, we'll give you that gun, just that's a life-saving measure just itself.
I mean, it doesn't, we don't need it for, for court admission, I mean, that's.
But a court would be great, absolutely.
We're, and, and court administration, I think it would help you better because they have, they'll know like what programs are certified.
Yep, and it's just something to, to move our area forward, move in the department forward, it's just.
Breaking down the language barrier.
Yeah, nobody has this and it's breaking down their language barrier because it, you can also speaks French, it's, you know, Arabic, it has, it has a whole, there's like a hundred and seventy one different languages, it can break down, so.
It doesn't do, doesn't do crack to any doubt.
It doesn't, it's not to buy it up.
It's a problem of work.
Right.
Uh, they just feed it up English, they get.
But, but it also would help with the fire departments too, because if they're on scene and something, our guys will go up there, we can, you know, use that as well for the fire department.
Any questions, anyone? Alright, and then moving on to uh, selling the twenty eighteen uh, Ford Fusion, I said we kind of said, you know, covered past some of those things that we're talking about coming up here, any questions with anyone?
So what I was thinking with that is for two thousand eighteen, that only has fifty six thousand miles on it, I'd say like fifty five, fifty six thousand dollars. I talked about putting a reserve on it, the twelve thousand, but when I looked into the pricing of it, I think a better reserve would probably be about fifteen.
A little wrong.
Yeah, and then we can use that to go back into the budget and, and pay for some of these, you know, accreditation.
Just please think if we wanna get these things and put the stickers on, we gotta take all back off.
These has no stickers.
Oh, no stickers?
No, they said they.
See, they were thinking about it, Steve.
Easy sell, very nice.
Any questions on that one, guys? And then last one, uh, the camera system down the portion of city hall that finally, they got finished, uh, it was Carl that we came in, gave us those quotes, does anybody have any questions on that? When I think Jim, that of Carl, they go through all the access points, after we wanted to finish off the building with.
Spoken the days, seven more.
Alright, so, any other questions on that one? Alright, anything else, well, that's it for the work session, so I adjourned the work session, that's six.